Call this meeting of the Champagne County Board Study Session into order. Please have a clerk call the roll, please.
Hartke.
Here.
James. Jay. Kibler. Langenheim. Maxwell. McGuire. Michaels. Mitchell. Petrie. Quisenberry. Richards. Rosales. Schrader. Schwartz. Alex. Berksen. Carter. Covert. Esri. Harper. Kurtz.
I believe we have a quorum. Have the motion to approve each and Mr. Langenheim's their second. Mr. Quisenberry, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Kurtz could not attend this evening. He's, he and his family are observing Passover this evening, so I'm filling in this evening for him. This evening, we'll start out with, I thank everyone that's shown up to give us their expert testimony advice this evening. If we could, we can start out with the Smart Energy Design Assistance Center, CDAC. So, I believe, go ahead and I'll have you state your name. I see you can, I think you've, about the microphones, push the button underneath the microphone. You see the red light light up?
It's on.
You're hot, you're ready to go. So if you would, please state your name and go right ahead with your presentation. Thank you.
My name is Christine Shalafu and I'm with CDAC, the Smart Energy Design Assistance Center. We're actually based here in Champagne. We're funded through DCEO, a grant from DCEO that's funded itself from the shareholder utilities in the state of Illinois. So ComEd, Amren, Nycor, Peoples, and North Shore Gas all contribute to the funds. And this diagram I have up, this slide, shows kind of how the funding works. On everyone's utility bill, whether you're residential or commercial, in these utility territories, there's an environmental charge. And those charges go into funds that are used for a variety of different energy efficiency programs, or EEPs. So ComEd and Amren, the electric utilities, they have their pools of money. And each one of them then gives a certain percentage of their money to DCEO to run public sector programs. And then the rest of the money is used for private sector programs. And the reason I make that distinction is because when, I'm going to talk a little bit about the incentives and things that are available for building owners. And if you are a public sector entity, you then have to go to DCEO for your incentives. If you're a private sector, you go to your local utility, your electric and gas utility. It's really advantageous to be public sector typically because they have a lot more money and they have a lot higher funding rate because they figure if you're a taxpayer-funded entity, you probably don't have a lot of disposable income. So they really want to encourage energy efficiency, so they incentivize it a lot more. It is, the way this funding is set up, it is not something our state can sweep. So the money is there where it's said it's going to be and the amount that it says it's going to be. So if they say you will get a certain amount of money, you will get that money. So it is a great program because it's very, very dependable and it is very well-funded in both the public and private sectors. So what does CDAC do? We help anyone who owns a building in the state of Illinois, particularly if you're in those utilities that I mentioned. So if you're a public sector entity, a local government, municipality, federal government, we can help you identify ways to save energy in your building. We work with public schools. Actually, this is a large percentage of what we do. Public schools have been coming across more funding lately for their facilities and so they're anxious to save energy in their buildings. So we've been working with a lot of the schools throughout the state. Community colleges, public universities, public works, and also for-profit businesses. Any building in the state of Illinois, as long as you're paying into one of those utility funds, can take advantage of the incentives that are available. They can take advantage of our services and a whole host of other opportunities that are out there. Some facts about CDAC. Everything we do is free to the customer. Again, it's fun to, you've actually paid for it because you've been paying on your utility bill. And so there is no additional charge to you, the building owner, whether you are a county government, whether you own your own business. We're there to help. We've done well over 1,000 energy assessments so far since we started about seven or eight years ago. We've recommended savings of about $7.5 million annually. There is a lot of energy to be saved. And when we recommend energy savings, it has to be cost-effective. It has to have a payback generally between one and seven years. Anything less than one year is considered something you ought to be doing regardless. So those are the things we're really targeting. We make it very easy for people to sign up for services. Many of the people that come to us, if there's better programs out there, we'll send them to those programs. Our job is just to get people into the best programs, to help them save the most energy the most cost-effective way possible, to find the best incentives. So we have to be up on what all the different programs are. So most of what we do are energy assessments and there's several different types of assessments we do. There's just quick help. People call in on our 800 number and they just have general questions or maybe for some reason their building doesn't qualify. They are in a jurisdiction that doesn't use one of the ratepayer or the utilities that I talked about. We can give them basic services over the phone. And so we do a fair amount of this. We have a lot of calls in every day that our staff help with. Our second level of services is a real energy assessment. And in this case, we'll look at utility data, find out how the building is working. Usually, we'll do a site visit and find out what is really there. We'll do some quick analysis to figure out what the energy savings will be and then we'll recommend those in a report. Our third level of services is just like the Level Two but much more comprehensive where we'll look and start getting basic estimates for what it costs to implement and look at lifecycle costing. Why would you do one versus the other? This takes a lot more time, whereas the Level Two service, we can usually do in a month or two. This can take four months. So it's a lot more work. So it really, it depends on what the client needs. And then our last level of services is just helping owners get the stuff implemented. If we've made recommendations, how can we help you get applications finished, find sources of funding, find contractors? This is a part of our services that we've really been working on a lot more in the past year or so. We weren't as good at this several years ago. In fact, we've actually worked with Champagne County before. We've done energy assessments for you. We've reviewed other energy assessments that you all have done. And now we do a lot more of that, just really helping getting people to implementation. It's also more important right now because money's tighter and so people need our help more. Whereas four or five years ago, it was a little bit easier to go out and just find the funding. People had a little more room in their budgets to get things implemented. So some of the top things we recommend, the no-brainers are the lighting. You have retrofit your lighting in here. I think you've finally done the gym area, last time I was in there. I think it had been done. If you've got a T-12 anywhere, it should be changed tomorrow because there's not going to be incentive funding for that for much longer because they can no longer make those old T-12 fluorescent tubes. Exit signs. That looks like a compact fluorescent exit sign. Can't really be sure unless I really looked at it. But we recommend LED exit signs as the most cost-effective. Looking at setting back thermostats is very, very cost-effective. It's very simple. If you've got programmable thermostats, you need to use them. You need to actually program them. If you have a building automation system or a BAS system, that can also be programmed to set back temperatures at night when no one's in the building. And energy-efficient equipment. These are much higher capital costs, but if you have to change out a system or you're putting in a new system, putting in the most energy-efficient system is definitely the way to go, particularly with the incentives that are available. Another service we offer is new construction design assistance. So if we have a client who is designing a new building, we come in and we work with the design team and help identify goals, energy efficiency goals, and then how to meet those goals. How can you do it cost-effectively? What are the paybacks of doing it? And then, most importantly, for most of our clients, what are the incentives? What money can they get back to help pay for it? Retrocommissioning is a somewhat new field that we have services in. For buildings over 150,000 square feet, we come in and look at the controls of the building. Most commercial buildings anymore are controlled by computers. And those computers go out of whack awfully fast. And so we come in and we look at how those controls are working, how all the different pieces of equipment are talking to each other and making it work the way it should where we can. All the recommendations we give in this program have to have a payback of less than 18 months. So we're talking really cost-effective strategies. But this program is the only program that we're associated with that has a monetary obligation that the building owner has to commit $10,000 of upgrades to their building. Again, with an 18-month payback, that's $10,000 well-spent. We put out a series of publications to give people more information. I've put some of those over there on the table that might pertain to buildings in this area. We do a series of case studies to let people know that other people have done this type of work. It's not uncommon, but a lot of particularly public sector clients are afraid to take that step. You're taking, you're using someone else's money, your taxpayer's money, and if it doesn't work, you as an elected official will hear about it. So you want to make sure things are pretty standard, well-accepted strategies. And so we put out a series of case studies to try and show other building owners who have done similar things. So that is just an overview of what CDAC is, the services we provide, and how we can help you all or help people in this county make their buildings more energy efficient.
Thank you. I think we can take questions now, if that's all right. Any questions?
Okay.
Mr. Richards?
Kristin, thanks for coming in. Great performance. It's one thing to talk about the programs you do. I think it'd be a little easier for everybody if maybe you talk about some of the concrete things that you've done for other public bodies in your presentation and for the Illinois counties. You talked a lot about that and I think talking about that will help everybody envision some of the things maybe you can do for us.
Sure. I think some of the other speakers are going to talk about some other examples of strategies that have been used. But we've probably worked with about 100 school districts, like I said, a lot of school districts. And typically, we can help people save about 30% of their energy use. Now lately, that's been going down a little bit because energy's really very, very cheap right now. But still, that's about our average. We have a school district that we've helped reduce their energy bill by a half a million dollars a year. We've worked with a lot of public water facilities because they are very high-energy users. I know the county doesn't have that. Those are usually more city-owned. And then we've worked with a lot of county office buildings, other county districts, to look at their buildings and help them save energy. I can get more detail as far as what savings we've had, what type of strategies we've provided, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah. What are the main ways that you're helping everyone save this amount of money? Are we talking mainly changing their lighting strategies? I know you've talked in the past a large amount about retrofitting buildings to make them more energy-efficient. Is that what we're talking about?
Well, so the low-hanging fruit, the easy strategies are always the lighting. And that's what we typically would look at first. And fortunately, we're seeing more and more buildings that have already done that. So now we have to dig a little deeper. The exit signs, that's one. There's a lot of really basic strategies, some of which may not save a whole lot of energy in themselves, but it adds up. You know, the exit sign's a perfect example. That's not using a whole lot of energy. If that's a CFL, it's probably using 13 watts. An LED will use about two watts, but it's on 24 hours a day, every day of the year, and so it adds up. Another really basic strategy, very similar to that, is vending occupancy controls. So you have a vending machine. It's got a bunch of light bulbs in it. It's got a compressor going constantly, keeping the beverages cold, and it's on 24 hours a day. But your building's not occupied 24 hours a day and you really don't care if people know if you have Coke or Pepsi when no one's there. So why is it on? So there's controllers that are made that only allow those lights to be on when it senses that people are present. And it cycles the compressor periodically just enough to keep the beverages cold, so it's not cycling it. It's not on all the time. Great energy savers. Big incentives for those too, because they save so much energy. It's so much of a percentage of the energy that they use. And then we start digging a little bit deeper. We look at things like air infiltration and weather seals on exterior doors. Generally, if you can see daylight around an exterior door, you're losing a lot of energy. And it's a really simple fix, but it's one that's missed all the time because they take a lot of upkeep to replace those door seals. It's not an expensive fix, but it's one that needs to be done. And then just looking at other places to seal up a building. And then we start digging deeper. Then we start looking at mechanical systems. Are there controls in the mechanical system that we can change? For instance, in a commercial building, you're required to bring in a certain amount of outside air so that people have enough oxygen to breathe and it gets rid of the pollutants. But a lot of mechanical systems have a fixed amount of outside air that they bring in for the maximum amount of occupancy that building could have, and it's like that 24 hours a day. But there's controls you can put on that sense the number of people in the space and how much outside air you really need, and it closes down those dampers so you're not bringing in excess outside air. Why is that important? When it's 32 degrees outside and you're trying to deliver 80-degree air, the more outside air, 32-degree air you bring in, that you have to heat up to 72 degrees and then you have to dump an equal amount of already-heated air outside, it's a huge waste of energy. So we call that demand-control ventilation. So we start looking at various controls. And then typically, one of the last things we look at are mechanical systems themselves because those are such big-ticket items that to change out a boiler or a chiller gets really, really expensive. And unless you're near the end of its useful life, it probably isn't cost-effective. So does that answer your question more?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Oh, good. Okay.
I was wondering if we could have Alan come up and join us here for this study session so that if we have specific questions regard to some of what we hear?
Mr. Reinhardt, if you'd like to.
He could join us. And my specific question that runs in that vein would be, how many T-12-type fixtures do we have left in?
Basically, the only building that we have T-12 fixtures left are the old parts of the old nursing home which are not being used right now and they're off most of the time. We just not had the funds or times to address that old section. Thank you.
And that strategy makes sense. If you're not turning them on, you're not using excess energy and the funds might be better used elsewhere. Most of the time, we say any T-12s in the building, get rid of them. But if there's an old storage room that's rarely used, just let them burn out and then think about replacing them. So that's very similar to what we recommend.
Ms. Petrie?
Thank you. I'm not sure if this question is good for you, Christine, or maybe when Don. Right now, on the facility committee, some of the data that's been provided by Mr. Reinhardt, he has to do with looking at a timeline for roof repairs. And so we have this expertise here in the room. Do you have any guidelines that you provide when you talk to some of your clients if they're at that point and they're considering roofing, roof repairs, alternatives to roofs, et cetera?
Sure. Absolutely. We often look at roofs because older roofs were typically put down with little or no insulation, particularly if it was before the energy crisis in the 1970s. And the bigger footprint your building has, the more roof area you have to lose energy through, lose that heat. So we always would recommend that you either get the building to code as far as the amount of insulation or exceed code, and we can give the recommended levels for that. We rarely recommend just replacing the roof to add insulation if the roof doesn't need to be replaced because it will not pay for itself. But if you're replacing the roof anyway, by all means, you should be adding insulation. Insulation's pretty cheap and it's going to be up there for 30 years. Hopefully, you're putting in a high-quality roof. And so you want to put in the best you can because that's a long-term investment. And then we want a roof that is going to have a high reflectance so that you're not overheating your space. So those are our two main strategies with roofs.
The county happens to have a number of buildings that are flat roofs. Do you have any specifics that you suggest to entities that have buildings with this kind of configuration as compared to slope roofs?
Again, you just want to meet code. R20 insulation meets code, right? R40? R20? No, R40 is attic, R20 is a flat roof. Continuous insulation. So you'd want to put that up there. That's actually the best way. The continuous insulation that's not broken up by structural members is the best type of insulation to have, and that's why it's so much lower of a value that you need, R20 for a flat roof versus R40 for an attic because you don't have areas where the heat can escape past the insulation.
Yeah, I have just kind of one question. It relates to something that I did back when I was at IDOT. And we created a policy that lowered the thermostat in our buildings and then, but then we allowed everybody to bring in space heaters and they just started to multiply throughout the building. So I'm concerned, we weren't really making any ground there. Do you guys have any data on where that balance is best struck?
Typically, electric heat is going to be your most expensive heat to use. So you don't really want people to be using electric heat.
So if people are uncomfortable at 68, going to 70 on a building thermostat that's well-regulated and well-controlled would be better than allowing people to bring in space heaters all over?
Generally, yes. A good education policy is important. I know my daughter likes to wear little tank tops in the middle of winter. In our house, get over it. My son sits on shorts year-round. I'm sorry if you're cold. So there's a little bit of an education, but you know, that doesn't really work so well in a commercial building. Sometimes, if you've got a problem with comfort, it's more than just a temperature issue. You have air infiltration. You're not delivering the air the right way. And in that case, you need to have someone come out and take a look at your building and see if you can find out why are people uncomfortable. So there's a lot of reasons to look at that. Another gadget that's out there that's been really successful is they have thermostats that are pre-programmed by that computer that runs the building. But in each space, there's a controller that allows the building occupant to have up to two-degree, actually, there's some that have a four-degree, control over their own space. Because some people like it warmer and some people like it colder. And it also gives them that feeling of control of their, where they are in the temperature where they are. Behavior change as it relates to energy efficiency is a really new, big, expanding field because it can have such a huge impact on how our buildings use energy.
Thank you. I just remember being a kid and Jimmy Carter saying, "Wear a sweater." So that's the way I was raised. So thank you very much.
Any other questions? Well, I know other people have presentations and I will be here for other questions.
Yes, that'd be great. Please stay around. That's great. I found the CDAC website, too. It's easy to find.
CDAC.org. It's got tons of information on it.
It sure does. Okay, great. Move on to the next item on the agenda. And we have two representatives from the IGBA, Illinois Green Business Association, Cassie Carroll and Ryan Wubler. If you, go ahead and state your name for the record, please, and proceed. Thank you.
Sure. My name's Cassie Carroll. I'm the executive director of the Illinois Green Business Association.
And I'm Ryan Wuber. I am the certification manager for the IGBA.
And let me get this up and running here. There we go. So we are, I'm going to tell you a little bit about today, about the IGBA, but really talking a little bit about the sustainability of business case. Why should we think about sustainability? So today, I'm going to go over a brief overview of what is the IGBA? What is the Illinois Green Business Association? How did we get started? Talking about business and sustainability because, as you know, even nonprofits, even local governments, even universities are, still have to run like a business even though they have a different tax exempt status. So we're talking about asset management and why green business? What are the benefits and potentially some challenges? And then we're going to talk about one of our specific programs at the Illinois Green Business Association. So what is the IGBA? We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization with a mission being to improve sustainable practices in Illinois businesses through education and engagement. We have a vision that it's, sustainability should just be a standard practice of economic activity. Really, that everyone should adopt sustainable practices, should be thinking about, well, how can I use my assets, my resources most efficiently and whatever? how can I use my assets, my resources most efficiently in whatever I'm doing? And we have three program areas that we'll go into a little bit later on. We do certification for businesses. We do direct energy efficiency installation. So, we do some of the things that Christine was talking about, some of the simpler things, and we'll go into that a little bit later. Then, we also do education. We actually have a monthly green drinks. The third Tuesday of every month, we have a green drinks where community members come together, and we have topics regarding sustainability in our local community. We also host a statewide green business summit. So, we started actually out of the University of Illinois, when I was graduating in 2008, and someone posed the question to us, "Green street, isn't that green? How do you green green street?" And that was something that sparked, well, green streets full of businesses. How do we help the businesses understand how they can reduce their environmental impact and get involved in the environment, but then also be profitable? So, we stumbled upon the California's Green Business Program, which we were just out there meeting with them last week, and really wanted to bring this program back to the Midwest. So, we started as a pilot community here in the Champaign-Urbana area. Now, we reach to Bloomington-Normal, Oak Park, and we're starting programs in Park Forest, Galesburg, most likely, and Charleston as well. So, we're continuing to grow our reach with our programs and help serve businesses, and help you understand more of what we do. So, we get a lot of, oh, going green, I've heard that before. It was something that happened back in the 70s. It was a fad. You know, we've had some of these people say, "Well, I was green before you were born. How can you help me?" And there are a lot of reasons to go green, because a lot of things have changed. But, you know, why is it important? There's a lot of different things that are going on. As Christine had mentioned, there's a lighting phase-out, so T-12s are actually phased out of productivity or production here in the U.S. We're going to have to change our light bulbs eventually, and the time is now. The incentives are going to run out for that sort of installation, so the lighting phase-out is something that we all have to face. There's a lot of incentive programs available, as Christine said, to switch out this type of equipment, in the private sector and the public sector. There are also tax incentives. If you're retrofitting a building, or you're building a new building with energy efficiency that goes above code, there's a lot of different tax incentives that you can apply for. I know at our summit, one of the directors of Facilities and Services said, "Well, if I would have known this before, we can save the university a lot of money on some of our new constructions, because we can apply for these different tax incentives." We had someone from Ernst &amp; Young come and speak at their summit about that. So, there's a lot of available things that you can apply for in terms of taxes, and tax rebates. Also, a national, some trend that's going on right now in New York, Washington, D.C., primarily, is that businesses are having to report their building energy data use. And that's going in, factoring into the sales of their building and their property. So, one of the things we really try to do is educate businesses, this might be coming our way. How do we start to track our energy use? How do we start to benchmark that? How do you even look at your energy use to see how you can save money? So, these are some things that impact businesses and local governments alike, but really, there's a lot of things that are going on right now to incorporate sustainability into our economy. So, we talk about, you know, if you take the green out of, you know, green business, what is it? And really, look at the asset management. If you see, it's a systematic process of operating, maintaining, upgrading, and disposing of assets cost-effectively. Well, that makes sense. We want to do that and save money. But if you add sustainability to that, aren't we just sustaining, like, aren't we just managing our assets well, but also reducing our environmental impact? So, we talk to businesses a lot about this, and we want to do these practices, like infrastructure asset management in our business, but there are environmental benefits to it as well. And that's what we really try to promote, is not only the economic benefits, but the environmental benefits as well. So, what are the benefits? Why is it important to reduce your energy use, or think about reducing the amount of purchasing that you do in a more sustainable way? Well, there's some direct savings. So, ISA, the International Society of Arbiculture, is a business in our community, and just through a letting retrofit alone, they save $300 a month throughout their facility. We also calculated recently that if businesses participate in our water conservation section of our checklist, so putting faucet aerators on your sinks, retrofitting your toilets, doing some water conservation practices, that you can save $13,000 a year per business. Minnichi's recently just had, we had a green out. We had a green night at Minnichi's with low-energy dishes, and he had a report of how much energy he saved, water, energy, and waste he saved throughout the program, and he's saving about $400 a month, just on those three areas, just through different strategies that we've helped him implement through our program. So, there's a direct savings associated to this. Also, it's a recruiting tool. BUC Bank is a business in our program, and they have certified all of their branches corporation-wide, meaning Indiana, Florida, and here in Illinois. And they saw it as a key reason to recruit new employees. They said, "Well, we want to be relevant to the incoming people that are going to work at our facilities. We really want to be a leader in this." So, it's a recruiting tool, and it's also a way for credible green marketing. We see a lot of these products that say natural, you know, made of organic products, but we look closer at the labels and find out that it's, you know, .1% or only 5%. And that's something, through our program, that you'll find that businesses credibly are doing things to help reduce their environmental impact, and also save money at the same time. So, how can we help? We do, as I said, our certification program, which Ryan will talk about here in a minute, but we do energy efficiency direct installations. So, for businesses throughout Champaign County, we can install faucet aerators, the LED exit signs that Christine was referencing, CFLs, and pre-rent spray valves, which are the sprayers in commercial kitchens. We install those at free, no cost to the business. And soon here in April, we'll be actually piloting a program where we'll do an energy assessment for a business, a short survey, but then help them connect to other programs and incentives that Ameren is offering. So, we actually did, so you could say, the restaurant is saving $6,000 per year with this free pre-rent spray valve. So, just to give you an example of some of the impact, we also installed 600 aerators in, or 16,000 aerators, excuse me, in 600 businesses throughout the southern half of Illinois. So, we're really doing a lot of this work. It's kind of a first step for businesses. And then, the education. We are holding our 2013 summit in Tinley Park this next year, and we, last year, we held it here in Champaign. 200 people came. We had some national keynotes come out. Great event, but it was a way to educate about green practices, and that's one of the things that we're interested in doing. And then, our certification program. Just to preface, our certification program covers office, retail, restaurant, café, and we're offering a hotel pilot program as well. As you were referring to, how can we help the county board, this is something that we can help suggest green practices in a variety of different areas to cut purchasing costs, waste costs, energy costs, water costs, and help engage your employees within the county to be more environmentally efficient, help save resources, do some of that employee education that Christine was referring to. So, I will now turn it over to Ryan to speak more about our certification program.
Thank you, Cassie. I'd first like to make a slight correction on two slides ago. My apologies, the portion on water savings, that was supposed to be 13,000 gallons per year. However, you can convert that. I saw your reaction, yes. 13,000 gallons, but however, breaking that down per gallons, there is a definite savings in your water bill per year. So, with our, yep, so with our certification program, as Cassie mentioned, it has nine areas of certification, and those include areas such as water conservation, energy conservation, employee practices, community outreach and development, transportation, and purchasing, along many others. These are rooted in conservation and efficiency principles, and are designed to increase cost savings and decrease unnecessary waste and pollution. And this will focus on the daily practices and equipment of that building. Are you all familiar with LEED? LEED buildings, LEED concept, that focuses on the building itself, the main hardware of that building. We focus on the internal aspect and the operations of that building, the employee practices within that building. So, that's a slight variation between the LEED program and our program. Next slide. So, the step one in this process, we will go to the business and do a consultation. We have our giant checklist of 200-some green management practices, GMPs, and we'll go through all of these with the business. And this is just a slight snapshot of our checklist assessment, and the top portion is bolded. Those are the required practices, if they are applicable. I will say that throughout this portion, that we have it broken down to yes, no, and NA. Item would be considered NA if you are a business owner who rents, and they do not have control over their landscape or the HVAC system that is in the landlord's domain. So, that area is NA, and you will not be penalized for that portion of the checklist. So, the items that are bolded are the required ones that are applicable, and the non-bolded are the optional items. And you have to complete 50% of those applicable items per section to get certified under our program. So, how do we help businesses go green? So, we go through this portion, we go through this checklist, we basically help them do a self-audit of their business. It's very, very comprehensive, and they will learn a lot about their business that they may not have known directly, and they may have had a very broad idea, but not a very specific item-by-item list that we will go through. We will then provide resource documents, and we will create a very, very specific policy attack plan for that business, and we will hold their hand throughout the entire process. We will consult with them step by step, and make sure that they are going through this process as easy and as efficiently as possible. We know businesses have their own functions to worry about, so we'll take a lot of that heavy lifting and do it for them. Do the research for them, make it easy and user-friendly for them to implement. That will go through our resource documents that we have compiled over years of research, and our expertise in our field. We have strong relations with CDAC, and we work with them on a lot of items. One of our required practices is actually, if they are qualified for a CDAC audit, they have to go through CDAC and do an energy assessment audit. So, we really partner with that, with the hard-building energy assessment with our more internal aspects. So, we have a very holistic kind of attack plan to help the business really see how they can become more sustainable and more economically efficient. Next slide, please? And also, sorry, we will do programs with Ameren, NICOR, and various utility incentive programs as well. So, the step two, after we go through the certification process and looking through that checklist, is we will create an implementation plan, and we use it in this very easy and user-friendly Excel document. We keep track of the action items that they have to implement, who will work on those, their portion, the business segment, or if it's something an IGBA staff person has to assist with. And then, we'll keep track of where they are in the program, and make sure that it's up-to-date, and that they know exactly where they stand and what they have to do to become The other big thing that we try to combat as part of our organization is greenwashing. Greenwashing is where people claim something is green when really it's not, and that is a plague in the sustainability field. A big example I like to use is people in aerosol cans are saying that these have no CFCs, and they're bragging that they have no CFCs in their aerosol cans, which really isn't anything to brag about, because those are banned by the Montreal Protocol. So, that's like saying, "Congratulations, you are following the law." So, that's greenwashing. So, we combat that through open and transparent forms of verifications. Those can be receipts, those can be pictures, visible policy documents signed by the CEO, director, supervisor, and those are open for people to see and to actually view how this business is going green, and becoming more economically efficient, and is a very transparent way for us to keep track of these practices. And finally, once they have been certified, aside from the energy efficiency benefits and their waste reduction benefits that they have gained, the other big thing that they will benefit from this program is the marketing aspect. They are, we will assist them with our marketing branch to vocalize what they have done to become more environmentally friendly, economically efficient. We will create a personalized marketing plan. They, some businesses have chosen to really emphasize the water conservation, others have focused to emphasize the energy conservation. And so, those are things we will personalize with them. And then, aside from that, we use various social media outlets to get the word out, and then, we will assist in any other way that we can. We have all this information on our website, that's another form of marketing, and we will put them in contact with other organizations and use our newsletter to spread the word more about this business, because customers care about that. That's a growing trend, that people want their businesses to be more environmentally friendly, and so, having that recognition can bring in more revenue in that sense. So, why certify it? Why get certified as a green business? Well, for the business, it gives them an easy, clear framework on how to become more sustainable. It will reduce their costs and their wastes, and it will give them marketing benefits to bring in more customers and increase their public appeal. For the consumer, they learn about practices, they learn there are green options in their community, more businesses that are environmentally friendly, that take the economics of the environment into account. Then, they are also likely to purchase from those green businesses, which ties back into the marketing benefits for that business. And also, within the community, with our networking, with our green drinks, it will create a business leadership in sustainability. It creates a network for businesses to share ideas, to have open communication between one another, and collaborate across non-traditional sectors.
So, future opportunities that we foresee in the marketplace in terms of green business are creating financing for sustainable projects. There's some financial institutions that are trying to help fund and have microloans for businesses, trying to help them do more activities in their business. Community ride, resource reduction challenges, different community engagement types of things, higher engagement with some incentive programs. The more we can help businesses connect to these incentive programs, the more energy efficiency practices they'll incorporate. Also, playing in the national recognized standard field, so what are other communities, and how can we learn from other communities to create the best program here, and for Illinois businesses? Obviously, metrics collection, so we're, you know, we're collecting some metrics at the front end, but we're also working to collect actual reduction metrics and data for these business practices. And then, more education opportunities. Example, the business summit that I spoke about. So, thank you very much for listening to our presentation. Feel free to ask us any questions.
Thank you both. Questions, Ms. Petrie?
Thank you. First, thanks to both of you. They sort of short shrifted their own bragging rights in what they accomplished with BUC Bank. They mentioned the states the facilities are in, but they accomplished with BUC to certify nine buildings, so that is a huge accomplishment, so congratulations. And now that you've done that, the county owns about 17 to 18 buildings, so you can raise the bar on what you'd like to work on. We have nursing homes, jail, places that you could really start focusing your advice for the benefit of the county and the people who use those buildings. The other tie that I'd like to let the county board know about is, in their long list of certification, has to do with local foods. And the Local Food Policy Council has begun conversations with this group to see how that can become a larger factor, and to build on that in relationship to what can be done with local foods and economic development, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's a very nice partnership that's already begun between the county and this group, so thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Mr. Alex.
I recognize you're a relatively new organization, but I'm wondering if you can speak to any experience that your organization's had working with municipalities or with public-sector institutions, because obviously, things like tax incentives don't particularly affect us. But clearly, there are gains to be made, so I'm interested in knowing whether you've been able to identify sources of funding, or opportunities for municipal corporations or public institutions to take advantage of your services.
Well, the major way that you can take advantage of our services is through our office and retail checklist, working with the different practices that we have, and evaluating different ways and strategies that you could do to reduce purchasing, water, energy, et cetera. I think Carol and Don will talk a little bit more about the specifics of performance contracting and some more funding in that sort of sense, but there's a lot of different grant opportunities, especially for, as Christine mentioned, in schools. There's a lot of organizations, for example, the Illinois Clean Energy Community Foundation works with a lot of different schools, nonprofits, NGO organizations. Do they work with governments, too? Yeah, they work with governments as well? And they're a great organization that helps not only with, say, lighting retrofits, but they do geothermal, solar, wind, they do a lot, they help fund a lot of the major projects. So, there are a lot of opportunities for funding. There's a website, dsireusa.org. I'll say that again, dsireusa.org. And you click on the Illinois, the state of Illinois. They have some great, they have a great comprehensive list of opportunities where governments, public entities, nonprofits can find funding in that area, so I would check that resource first.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I can add to that, too, as far as the tax incentives, the way the tax incentives are, these are federal tax incentives, the way they're set up is that... are, these are federal tax incentives, the way they're set up is that a public entity can assign the tax incentive to their design firm. So that, and then the idea is the design firm then reduces their fees to the public entity. It is, it's a really nice system. The only problem with it right now is most design firms aren't paying enough in taxes to have a tax break. So, but it's something to bring up, especially if you're designing a new building or you're retrofitting a building to make it much more energy efficient, that those options are out there with some of these tax incentives.
Thank you.
Sign up for performance contractor.
Ms. Burks.
If we're all paying for your SEDAC, why is it that the services are only for businesses and public entities?
Anyone who owns a building. Well, there's programs for residential buildings, we just don't work on those programs, there's other similar groups to SEDAC that do the residential buildings. We just do commercial buildings, that's our contract, but there are groups that do the residential.
And they're paid by the same funding?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Yeah, if you pay into the fund, you're eligible for something. We just handle the multifamily and commercial buildings.
Thank you.
If you go, let me jump in, if you go on actonenergy.com, that's Ameren's website for all their residential programs, and you can sign up for a home energy audit, you can buy cheap supplies or energy-efficient equipment, excuse me, for your home. They have an online store, so it's a great resource to have.
Thank you.
Any?
And just to add to that, you can also go to Home Depot, and the light bulbs are already pre-incentivized. You just have to look for the ones with the little label, and you'll notice they're much cheaper, the ones next to it without the label, because they have already been incentivized. So you can get CFLs for 50 cents each, if you get the right ones.
Any further questions? Mr. Esri.
Yes, thank you. This will be for Cassie and/or Ryan. You mentioned, you know, giving out free, all the free aerators and LED lights and stuff. Just wondering where those come from, like your funding source for you to buy them, to provide them free, and/or if they're donated, or just wondering where they come from.
Yeah, it's part of the, also, the program or the incentive money that's available through the utility companies. So on your electric bill and your gas bill, you're paying for those already. The, basically, the utility companies have to have a certain amount of savings every year, and they pay a subcontractor to administer those programs. We're kind of like the subcontractor for the subcontractor, actually going out and doing the implementation in small businesses, because a lot of these programs focus on the large businesses, because that's where a lot of the savings will come from. But we also thought that it was important to include the small businesses, and you can generate a lot of savings from collectively putting this equipment in those small businesses. So we're going door-to-door, installing these different things and providing the small businesses with those opportunities as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Maxwell.
Thank you. I'll maybe make some additional comments for possibly the benefit of some of the board members that didn't attend the County Board Association meeting here on Saturday. And the County Board Association did pass out literature concerning these spray nozzles, and you actually can obtain those for the county through those, through the County Board Association, I believe. Thank you.
Mr. Maxwell, we have taken advantage of that opportunity. We've replaced the only two pre-rinse aerators that we have in the county.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? I just want to kind of piggyback off what Ms. Petrie said about food, local food and local food council. Not so much the food council, but the local food, and that is, I'm not sure if you're aware of it, you might want to contact the County Farm Bureau. There's a bit of a pilot program going on up in Rantoul, in conjunction with the City of Rantoul and the Farm Bureau, and I believe the extension service is involved into it some way. Are you familiar with this, or?
No, keep going.
Okay. You're bobbing your head, yes, yes, I didn't.
Familiar with the organizations, not what you.
Okay, all right. But anyway, with incentives from the City of Rantoul, they're going into lots that the city is, has taken, due for tax reasons or whatever. A lot of open lots, empty lots, and they're trying to create more garden space, I guess, for lack of a better word. But it's a bit of a, I'm not sure how extensive it is, I just heard about it this last week, I believe Friday last week. So it might be something you want to check into.
Thank you for letting us know about that, we didn't know.
Sure. Ms. Petrie?
I'll expand on what John introduced you all to. This has been sort of in talking place for about 12 months, and the Local Food Policy Council is sort of a thread within a lot, but it has a lot of cooperative layers. And the exciting thing is, is the, there's a lot of acreage, contiguous acreage right in the city, and it's not only contiguous acreage, but it's got utilities and water. And so they're looking at turning all of this into local food growth, economic development. In addition to that, they have some large empty buildings, and so the conversation now is turning to how can one, or more than one possibly, be used as a food hub? And then there's another aspect and other empty buildings, and looking at that for becoming a fish farm. So, and things seem to be coming together in a very serendipitous manner, and such that things are moving forward with greater and greater speed. So it seems to have beginning to take on a life of its own. Yeah, so it's kind of exciting, yeah.
Fantastic. It sounds something similar to what Detroit's been trying to do with a lot of their empty lots. So that's fantastic.
I think up there, they might have quite a few acres that they can be dealing with, unfortunately. All right, if there are no more further comments or questions, we'll move through the agenda. Grant opportunities. Mr. Fournier? If you would, grab the mic, sir.
Would you like to sit here? I can just move.
Oh, I can. Good.
Are you good?
That would be great. If you would, for the record, state your name and your position, and please proceed. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Sorry, I was a little bit late, I had to teach tonight, so. I'm Don Fournier. I work with the County Board Association on energy projects, part of, with Kelly and Carol Kulik. What I'd like to talk a little bit about is kind of a two-part thing. I'd like to first talk a little bit about energy, how we look at energy projects, how we look at the economics of energy efficiency, and then the second part I'd like to call is show me the money. So we'll look at the incentives and how they can impact energy projects. So if you look at a typical office-type building, about 28% of its operating expenses are associated with the energy costs of the building. So, and Christine has shown that probably typical savings may be in the range of 30% available. So when you look at that, about 10% of your operating costs are being wasted, if you're not taking advantage of the energy efficiency opportunities in that building. And so, but there's more involved than just the energy, just the money waste, you know? You can improve your property fundamentals, the building asset value, the return on investment of what you do with your money, all can be taken care of in the energy upgrade process. So if you look at the, that average facility and 30% reduction, if the facility uses more than average, the opportunity is probably even greater than that, you know? And the bigger the energy wasted is, the more there's, more the opportunity is to rein that in. And if it's a below-average facility, there's still things that you can do, maybe you can only save 5% or something like that. But, you know, every building has opportunities in it, even brand-new buildings, we find. So many people who own assets in these buildings, they tend not to think about the kilowatt-hours or the thermes, they get kind of lost, they just want to know what the bill is. But what they do care about is the services that energy provides in these buildings. So we're talking about lighting, heating, cooling, fresh air, hot water, these things. These are what you care about in your buildings. And you really want properly-conditioned space while the people are there to do the work, because that's what enhances productivity. The name of the game anymore isn't to freeze them in the dark, like we used to do in the 70s. That's, Jimmy Carter is long gone with his sweater. You know, and you think about what people like in buildings, they want to be between 70 and 74 degrees. That's kind of where people like it. And that's not 68 degrees, and that's not 78 degrees, you know? So, and anything else, it can reduce your productivity. When we look at buildings, look at what you're spending per energy per square foot. So it's $2, $3, $4 per square foot for energy. What do the people cost? $150, $200, $7 per square foot, you know, $700 per square foot, depends on the salary. If you've got somebody in an office making $100,000 and your office is 150 square feet, you know, how many dollars per square foot? So if you can improve their productivity 1% or 2%, it dwarfs the energy costs in the building. So really, what you want to do is have good, effective workspace, is what we want. So, but you want, so you want to receive these energy-based services at the lowest possible cost. That means you want to do it at the most efficient manner, and the manner that befits the function that's going on in that space. So you want comfort, you know, on higher quality and more productive workspace is what you're really after. So when you think of these upgrade projects in terms of simple payback, that's what people think, you know, how am I going to get this, how fast am I going to get the returns? Is it going to be two-year payback, three-year payback, four-year payback? The other thing is, you know, you get, people get stuck on that, and then they delay, and they delay. And every month, or every year that you delay doing something about your energy expenses are permanently lost potential. They're gone forever. That savings that you could have got last month by acting is now gone forever. So need to think about that. So continue, consider something, say we can save an annual electric cost of, we have costs of $25,000 a year, electric bill, and we can do an upgrade and save 30% of that, so that's $7,500 per year. So say it costs $22,500 to save that energy, so that gives you, what, a simple three-year Delaying that sort of forfeits a low-risk investment that's a 32% return on investment. And I don't know what you're getting on your money nowadays, but my bank's giving me about, I'm not even sure it's positive interest anymore on my savings account, or your stocks or your funds. So, if you think about, you know, that return on investment and what that rate is, and there are incentives out there now to buy down that upfront cost. So if you can get that project to cost $15,000 instead of $22,500, you're talking now a two-year payback or a better than 50% return on your investment. So that's an even better return with little or no risk. So, you know, the money is one thing, the other thing is there are other factors associated with energy efficiency that aren't tangible. I mean, they're not monetary-related, but they're real and they're tangible. You know, someone mentioned later, earlier about, you know, you turn the thermostat down to 68 and everybody brings an electric heater in, and then you probably have a net loss on the whole project. But that personnel productivity is higher and better with better conditioning, more controls, and better lighting. And we find that people like to control their environment. So they want that little knob on the wall that they can turn it up one or two degrees. They want that switch on the wall where they can adjust the lighting level to half level, these types of things. They want that control of their space. And equipment runs less in an inefficient building, requires less maintenance, and it has an extended life, so you save those ways also. And then, you know, if you got sealed and well-insulated ducts, they're quieter, they get the air to where it's needed, not up in the attic space somewhere or up in the plenum somewhere. And so you get better performance and hence productivity that way. You can reduce your lighting load. In the summer, it also reduces your air conditioning load and the peak demand. And so you save energy two ways with a lighting project. You save on air conditioning and you save on the lighting itself. So, and if energy is a smaller part of your operating cost, then you become less vulnerable to price spikes in energy resources. We happen to be in a time of fairly low natural gas costs right now. I think it has finally turned around and it's going to go on its way back up. And the best predictor of what the natural gas price is going to be is how many drilling rigs are drilling for natural gas versus drilling for oil. And if you look at the curves on the two, natural gas rigs are plummeting, oil rigs are on the rise, because they're taking those assets and putting them to drilling for oil instead of natural gas. Why? Because the price of gas is too low, and believe me, buddies at the American Gas Association don't like 250 a therm. So, so that's going to turn around in a bit. Electrical prices are going to slowly increase over time, too. So you want to renew yourself from these, from these price volatility. So, so energy reduction is an investment that, you know, has a price for, but also, you know, to bring up the kind of the elephant in the room, is climate change is another issue. We worry about our carbon footprints nowadays, and many people are starting to move into that regime where they want to reduce their energy consumption to reduce their carbon footprint, is another one. The demand for energy-efficient properties increasing, we see more and more people want buildings that are well-positioned in relation to their energy and their carbon footprints. The green, the green business people can tell you about that, because that's what these businesses are looking for. They're looking for a lighter footprint, both for their energy consumption and the rest of the way they do their business. You get goodwill in the community from being efficient. So all of those things add value to your bottom line, some of them don't have a dollar figure associated, but they do have an impact from energy efficiency. Now, so where's the money? How do we buy these costs down? How do we get a real great return on investment? I want to talk about three things. I'll talk a little bit about the Illinois Energy Now program, which is the program that's funded by the utilities through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. I'll talk a little bit about the Clean Energy Community Foundation and what they're up to, and we'll talk a little bit about other places to look for money. So, Illinois Energy Now is operated by the State Energy Office, which is housed at Department of Commerce, Economic Opportunity. How this program is funded is basically Ameren collects all this money from your natural gas and your electric bills, 25% of that part is given to the state. The state takes that money and operates for the public sector and for the low-income sector. So they have programs associated with those two sectors. And schools are specifically called out in the law, too. So they offer units of local government, incentives to upgrade for electrical and natural gas savings. The programs are multi-million dollars now, and they're funded not by tax dollars, but the service benefits charged, we call them, on your bills. And if you look on your electric bill, I think there's something called an EDR on there, and if you look on your gas bill, I think it's an EGR from Ameren. Those are where the money's coming from. These are the budgets now for this program that the state's operating, and you can see we're in, we're in year 2012. It finishes up on May 30th, so 55 million in electric program, 22 million in the natural gas program. Next year bumps the, we've flatlined on electricity now, 55 million again, and then 30 million in natural gas. It's still ramping up. So that's about $70 million a year available for energy projects for the public sector. So what they're doing essentially is providing rebates or incentives for installing energy-efficient projects and making your buildings more energy-efficient. And they range from 15% to 75% of your energy cost. There's sort of a cap on 75% of your improvement. They like you to have a little skin in the game, so they like you to pay at least 25%. These programs are continuing, they're in law, they'll go on. We're in the second year of a three-year program, so 2013 is, it's already budgeted and all laid out. They're now putting together the program for 2012. They're now putting together the program for 2014, 15, and 16. They go in three-year increments. So, these programs are going to be here and they're going to endure. To be eligible, you need to get your electric delivery and your natural gas delivery from Ameren in this area of the state. So, if you call Ameren, Illinois when the lights come out or you smell gas, then you're probably eligible for the incentives. If you call or co-op, then you're not. So, it all depends on who actually delivers your electricity. They don't care where it comes from anymore. It's just who delivers it. Okay? So, the savings in the past years have been, pretty much, a big chunk has been lighting, with a small piece for H V A C, but overwhelmingly has been lighting. And that picture's going to slowly change as we sort of start to buy out the lighting, and we're going to move more into H V A Cs and building controls and other aspects. But, you know, the low-hanging fruit has been lighting, but as I say, we're in year five of the lighting program. So, it's just starting to go. So, electric measures that are available for incentives are certainly lighting, lighting equipment, refrigeration equipment, kitchen equipment, HVAC equipment, motors and drives, LED traffic signals. And those are all, they all have sort of what we call prescriptive rates. They have, you buy this piece of equipment at this efficiency, you get this amount of money for that. Lighting works that way, pretty much. They also have what we call custom incentives, and they're based on, they're for things that are not covered in the prescriptive standards. And how those work is essentially, they have to have a one-to-seven-year payback, and they'll pay you three dollars a therm or twelve cents a kilowatt-hour for savings. And at three dollars a therm, up until January 1st was a dollar-fiftieth therm. They've doubled the gas incentives to make the program more viable. And those double incentives should carry out through the next few years also. Natural gas things that they'll fund, certainly new furnaces have to be high-efficiency equipment, new boilers, water heaters, both tanked and tankless, condensing boilers, the spray valves. Pretty much, everybody has programs now to freely install those things. Kitchen equipment, they have a lot of steam cookers and things that can also be gas-fired instead of electric. Direct digital controls on the buildings now have a standard incentive associated with them. Demand-controlled ventilation has a standard incentive associated with it. Custom measures for HVAC upgrades, things that aren't covered by the standard incentives. And here again, three dollars a therm for the custom gas-type things. There's also a program for natural gas boiler tune-ups. They'll, for a boiler that's greater than two-hundred thousand BTUs per hour, they'll contribute to a tune-up from a qualified contractor to do that. And other parts of that program are also, if you have no insulation on piping, they'll pay so much per foot of insulation based on the diameter of the pipe. They'll also pay for steam trap replacement based on the pressure of the steam trap. So, we're trying to get the boiler plants more effective in our buildings, too. Applications for this year can go up to May 15th, and then if you miss that window, then you're going to move to the next year. The next year starts June 1st. So, is it worth doing this? Public schools have been, been big beneficiaries of this program now. Some have very large incentives. Some examples here, Jefferson County did lighting upgrades and outdoor lighting. They had a project cost of a hundred thousand dollars, and they got a seventy-five thousand dollar incentive for that. So, that covered seventy-five percent of the project. Very, very good. Lighting incentives have been excellent all along. LED projects for crosswalks and this type of thing. This is City of Champagne. They had a hundred-and-six thousand dollar project. They got a thirty thousand, thirty-two thousand dollar incentive or fifteen percent of that, depending somewhat on what you do and what gets covered. Natural gas boilers, this is a school district. They had a project cost of seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's why Christine mentioned boilers are a little on the pricey side, so they're going to come up with some money. But the rebate was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Now, the rebate is five-hundred thousand. So, you know, they're going to cover two-thirds of that cost for boilers. So, pretty good, pretty good deal. I just got an incentive for Rock Falls Schools, boilers, new boilers paid for. City of Evanston, they did parking garage lighting, LED upgrades in their community centers, a chiller installed in the library. It was a fairly expensive project, but they got an eighty thousand dollar rebate. Sixteen of that was for the chiller alone. So, pretty good rebates there. Oregon Park District, they did lighting, conversion to T8s, occupancy sensors, forty-four thousand dollar project. They got a thirty thousand dollar rebate. So, the money's out there, and it's fairly easy to come by. How do you get the money for this project? You simply, you can apply to Illinois Energy Now or illinoisenergy.org will also get you there. So, there's a couple of different websites. They all get you to the DCO website on energy. You can, there's forums you can pull down online, but application assistance is available for you all. They have also on a website to tell you if there's funding available. They have a little indicator, and right now, there's still funding available from Ameren ComEd. All the utilities, there's still money. On their website, there's a little button called Illinois Energy Now. You can click that button. It takes you to all the information about the incentives. How it works, you submit typically for a pre-approval application. They ask for all kinds of data and information on what you're going to do. You receive a notice to proceed, which means they're going to set the money aside from you. As long as you finish that project up by May 15th and submit it, then you'll get the money from that year. Then, when your project is done, you've got to submit a final application, supporting documentation that you actually did it, i.e., the bill from the contractor showing that they installed the equipment. And then they'll process, and you'll get a rebate or a grant, depending on how much money it is, how bad the paperwork has to be from the state. So, it's a pretty straightforward process. New applicants have to be in by April 15. Final applications this year have to be in by May 15th. And that's, every year, it's the same cycle. And then June 1st starts the cycle again. They also have other programs at DCO. They provide technical assistance for energy performance contracting, and I think we're going to, you're going to talk about EPC, so I won't get into that much at all. But they do have information and technical expertise available that's already prefunded. Another funding source is the Illinois Clean Energy Community Foundation. They were mentioned earlier. They have funding for nonprofits and the public sector. So, they have, their program is a little complex and continuously changing. I suggest you go to their website, illinoiscleanenergy.org, and see what's up now. They run their grant cycles a couple of times a year. Right now, they're trying to prevent overlap from the DCO programs. So, you're not going to get, if you're, if you are eligible for DCO lighting grants, you're not going to get any from, from Clean Energy. But they do give grants for those who are ineligible for the public sector, like people out in, like I co-op. Those, they, the public sector there can get grants from, from Clean Energy. Also, the municipal utilities like Grant Tool and places like that also have a separate program that's available now, too. So, they have a lighting program for non-eeps. They have a geothermal and innovative HVAC system incentive. That is available to you all. I'm helping Champagne Park District right now get geothermal incentives for their, for their new rec center that they're going to build. They also have energy efficiency and renewable energy grants from Clean Energy. And they have a special program on sewage treatment plants now. So, if you've got a sewage treatment plant, you're operating public sector, they have incentives for that, too. And they have high-performance green building incentives. So, if you're thinking about building a new building and you're going to do a lead building, you can essentially, if you do lead silver, lead gold, you can get the fees essentially paid for by these guys. They'll, they'll contribute, and they'll also pay for the commissioning of the building and some other things. So, you can get up to probably a couple hundred thousand dollar grant from them for a green building. So, lots of good stuff from Clean Energy. DCO also has renewable energy programs. They also have recycling programs and other things that are going on. Cassie mentioned the Desire USA website. That's, by the way, that stands for Database of State Incentives for Renewable and Efficiency in the USA.
Yeah, it's a great website.
It's a great website. If anybody's got a program out there, they're, they're on to it, and they update periodically, I think, North Carolina, University of North Carolina.
Pretty much on top of it.
They keep it, they keep it going. And we ping them all the time, too. So, so, they list everything at the national state level, and they update on a regular basis. Now...
Mr. Fournier, could I ask you to speak just a little bit closer to the mic?
Sure.
They're having difficulty picking you up. Thank you.
Okay, good. The County Board Association does have assistance in winding your way through these grants. We have a grant from DCO to, to help you do applications for the program, help you figure out how you want to access the program. We can look at your buildings. We can work with CDEC. If they've done an audit for you, we can help you take that audit from, from the pages to reality by helping you decide how you want to proceed. And then we can do all the paperwork to get your grants for you. We can, we do that. As I say, we're funded by DCO to do that. Carol Kulik's available. She can provide advice and guidance if you want her to talk to her group or anything like that about these programs. She's available. And then I'm, I'm the techie guy. I'm, I do the paperwork and do audits and help you figure out programs and plans and that type of thing. So, we're available. We're free. We're funded through the County Board Association, and they have the grant from DCO to do that. It's called a B Y T grant, I think. A B Y T.
That's the world's worst acronym.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, whatever. So, that's what I wanted to let you know, so you can give me an email or a call. I can answer questions about any of these programs.
If I can just step in real quick. I have to leave. I have a child that needs to be picked up. If you have more questions about CDEC, Don can answer them probably better than I can. So, feel free to ask Don or contact me any other way. And thank you very much for inviting us all to come here and talk to you all.
Yes, thank you for participating, and we appreciate you spending time with us this evening, so.
Thanks.
No, that's okay. Well-understood. Okay, questions? Mr. Hurkey?
Yeah, Don, I kind of have a question about something specific. This actually was something just brought to my attention today by a constituent. So, and they had read about this meeting in the paper, so they knew that, so this meeting's already bringing the community involved into, into doing this and bringing some new ideas to us. We recently had a boiler go out at the nursing home. And I'm looking at this information from, that was developed at the University of Illinois about ozone technology for laundry. Are you familiar with this?
Somewhat.
Is this, they, they talk about potential savings of ninety percent of your hot water costs because you're using cold water, your chemical costs reduced by sixty-five percent, extend the length of your linens, et cetera. But is this something that perhaps we could find funding for if we can show energy savings on, especially under the, what did you, the customized areas?
We can do it as a custom if it's got a one-to-seven-year payback. You can get, and it'd be three bucks a therm.
Oh, great, because this is something we want to look at at the nursing home, so help.
Josh, I might throw in that the Swan Center?
Yes.
They use that technology and have for many years.
This is where I got that information from, and I'm very interested in, I'm going to go, Max Redmond from over there, and one of his friends introduced me to this. So, I look forward to going and seeing that, and I think that this could be a really good move. For one thing, it, it helps us fight superbugs, which we all know is something we're going to be considering in the next year, in future years, and, you know, hospitals will be moving to it, so hopefully the nursing home can. So, thank you for here. Thank you all for helping tonight.
Questions? Okay, Ms. Petrie?
Of course. First of all, thank you very much. And Christine's left, but she laid the foundation for some of the economic savings and giving the argument for why one considers making the investment to do this, and you've solidified it. And I really appreciate that because one of the arguments that I have been trying to make is the county does not have excess funds, nor do any other government entities. However, we have improved our reserve fund, but that reserve fund makes very little return rate on it. And with what you all have presented, at a minimum, we could double our return rate and probably do much better than that. And these are short periods of time. It is not like investing for twenty years. These are somewhere between, what, three and maybe seven-year window of time.
Sure, at the most.
Depending on the size of the project. So, it seems that you have enhanced our knowledge base so we can have this conversation a little bit better among ourselves on the County Board and ways to use our money and do it very efficiently. My second question is, how does one get in the queue for your assistance? Does one ask our administrator to?
You send me an email.
Okay.
And, or call me on my cell phone.
Okay, great. And then number three, as I mentioned previously, some of the focus of the Facilities Committee has been on roofs. You haven't talked anything about any incentives for roof projects?
Roofs would have to fall under what we call the custom incentive.
On custom, okay. Thank you.
Almost anything to do with the envelope, building envelope would fall under custom.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. If you stay around, we might have some following the next presentation. And the next presentation is performance contracting. Carol Timms.
Do you want to sit down? Or how do you want to work it? Why don't you just go, we'll like make a train. No, I just didn't want Don to have to move. I'm playing music with him. Okay, I'm Carol Timms, and I am the Director of EnergyNet. And so, usually, I'm talking to schools about performance contracting, but I am pleased to talk with you. The Illinois law allows you, as a governmental entity, to fund your building improvements in a number of ways. Performance contracting is usually considered an installment contract, and there's specific legislation allowing you to do this. It allows you to benefit from energy savings without raising taxes, which nobody likes, or selling bonds. I call it a budget-neutral solution. What that means is that when you go to finance your energy improvements, you're going to have a contract with an energy service company, and they're going to guarantee your savings. So, if I use round numbers and I tell you that you're going to save ten thousand dollars a month, and you're going to pay ten thousand dollars a month for the improvements that are being put in, that means that your county budget is exactly the same as it has been, but you're benefiting from energy improvements. And the contract with the performance contractor is going to be about seven years or so. So, after the end of that contract, all the savings go to the county. There are a couple of benefits that are especially important, I think, to talk about with performance contracting. First of all, you're going to have a single contract for whatever project you're doing. That means you don't have to bid out the subcontractors, you don't have to manage the subcontractors, you only have one entity to work with. Also, when you negotiate your contract, there's a fixed price. It means there are no surprises for you down the road going, oh, well, yes, but we had to do X, Y, or Z. The performance contractor, the ESCO, is the one that holds the risk on that. So, it's up to them to manage it well. Once you negotiate the price, that's it. They guarantee your energy savings. So, we go back to my ten thousand dollar a month example. If they say you're going to save ten thousand dollars a month, and say it's February and you only saved eight thousand, instead of having to pay that extra two thousand, they assume that risk. So, the amount you pay them is reduced by two thousand because you had to pay the utility company the other two. Again, no surprises for you. This is good for an elected board. The energy savings, as I said, continue after the contract. And something that I think is really important is the county benefits, then, from a relationship that they've built with a trusted energy advisor. It's just as if you were hiring an attorney or a tax consultant, a management consultant, whatever. You're building that relationship. So, you've got someone to go to and say, is this a good idea? What do I do about these roofs? What about this laundry system? You have someone to work with on that. When you decide you want to do a contract and you issue an RFP, you have choices. You can take your project... You can take your project and say, I'm issuing an RFP as a county for this project, which could include multiple buildings. Or you can say, you know what, I'm going to issue an RFP to select a partner, someone who I can work with over several years for several projects. At any point, if you're not happy with that partner, you don't have to re-up your contract. But it allows you to issue one RFP instead of maybe three. So that's an option. How do you know about these things? Well, Don already mentioned that DCO has this wonderful free program that they will help you through the process. They have been involved with performance contracting for more than 10 years, probably 20 years. And what they do is they can provide you with all the sample documents you need. They have all the addresses of the ESCOs, the energy service companies, for you to send the RFP to. And what I think is most valuable, just like the people you've heard talking and sharing their expertise with you tonight, you will get the benefit of a national expert in performance contracting. His name is David Burr. He's based out of Evanston. He is one of the most intelligent men I think I've ever met. He really knows what he's doing. So he will help you decide what kind of RFP you want to issue, and he will help you review the proposals when they come in, which is huge. And of course, that program, as I said, is free. So what can you expect from the proposals? Once you've issued an RFP, you're going to have a date or dates where any ESCO who's interested in bidding on that can come and look at the facilities that you've put into your package, who you want to work on. So they're going to go and do an assessment of those facilities. It's going to be a walkthrough. It's not going to be the engineering-grade audit that you'll get once you choose an ESCO. But it will give them the chance to really look at the buildings, figure out what the improvements are, make some calculations about what the savings are likely to be, and then be able to present that to you along with financing options. So that's what you'll get in the proposal. They've looked at your buildings. They're giving you advice. You can have a CDAC audit also. And then you can compare the two, if you like, the CDAC audit versus the ESCO's assessments so that you can say, hmm, CDAC didn't mention this, or the ESCO didn't mention this, and why not? And again, as you review those, David Burr can help you form your questions, ask your questions, and get the answers that make sense. Now, what I'm going to say to you is, as you review, you're going to read the proposals, and then you're going to have an interview with the folks, with the ESCOs. What I'm going to say to you is, listen very carefully. So I put these big-eared bunnies up there. Here's what I want you to listen for. First of all, it needs to be all about you. If the performance contractor just tells you how wonderful they are, and they're all wonderful in their own eyes. If they tell you just how wonderful they are, and they haven't listened to your priorities, and they haven't internalized your needs, then the customer service after the sale may not be as strong as I want it to be for you. When I talk about customer service, I'm thinking, how are they going to manage the construction process? I often work with schools, and I hear what works well and what went wrong. And if the time schedule for your project is important to you, like it would be for a school, and they don't manage the process well, and you can't open school on time, that's a problem. So whatever is important to you in the construction process, how are they going to manage it? How are they going to report back to you? And how are they going to make sure that everything goes as smoothly as you want? Because ultimately, the voters look to you and say, why did you do that? Why did you pick that company or something? So you want to be sure that you've listened for that process. And then there are some companies, some of the better ones, that will offer special services for you. I don't mean trips and jewelry and things. I mean, they're going to make the project even better than what you expected. Some companies will do grant writing for you. It's something they do free. It's included in their services. They will apply for the Illinois Energy Now Funds. They will also apply for funds from any other area that they know of that would fund your project, especially when it's a custom project. The other thing they'll do that I think is important for a county board or any elected group is they will market your results to your constituents. That's a wonderful service, because if you tell your constituents how great you are, that's nice. If someone else tells them and has the numbers to back it up, that's better. Always ask for references, of course. But listen for these important characteristics, because not all companies are created the same. You have a role, too, in making your project go very well and being a good partner to your new partner, the ESCO. And that is to plan ahead and really make clear what your priorities are. They can serve you better if they know what's most important to you. So what facilities do you want to include in this project, maybe in future projects? But prioritize that. Do you want to give preference to green energy solutions? When I worked with Unit Four to bring in a performance contractor, they very much wanted geothermal. Some companies just went, no, it's not cost-effective, forget it. Other companies made it work. That's important, because in Champaign and Champaign County, we know that our citizens really do care about green energy. And they want to know that down the road, the choices that are being made are going to be the most effective on every level, on the budget level and on the environmental level. So if that's important to you, let the performance contractors know ahead of time. And then if you need to require that they use union labor or local labor or minority-owned companies or any combination of that, tell them upfront. Because, you know, they're going to bid out the job. And if, after they've bid out the job and come up with an agreement with you that it's going to cost this much, and then you go and say, oh, yeah, but by the way, we need to have this, their costs are going to go up, and either they're not going to be able to give you what you want, or you're not being a very good partner to them. So this is a relationship that you're building with an ESCO, and both sides need to really do their jobs. So listen to what they have to say and make sure they're going to be a good partner for you, and then make sure you're a good partner for them, too. That is really the crux of my talk, so what questions do you have?
Ms. Schwartz.
You said that this is a budget-neutral proposition.
I said it is a budget-neutral.
In the sense that the savings pretty much are what you pay the company?
Right. It's a combination of the operational savings and the energy savings.
What about the investment, though? The investment is still necessary, right?
You don't pay any upfront investment. You have a contract with them where you make payments on it.
So they pay for the equipment. They pay for the installation. They pay for everything?
Yes.
And what happens if energy prices triple? They would cover that? So basically, you're saying, I mean, I don't know specific contracts, but they guarantee not only that their advice is good, but no matter what happens with energy prices, they absorb it? Is that how those contracts work?
They do, because they are constantly looking at what the market's going to do. They're making those predictions. They're, and energy service companies are very large companies. And when you hear their presentations, they almost always start with, well, we have assets in those such-and-such billions, and we have this team that's been around forever, and, you know, and we're just wonderful.
So you said that they're going to advise about financing options, but why do I need financing if I don't pay financing?
Well, they do the financing, and what that means is they're going to go out to the market, and they're going to get financing for your project. So they're going to come back and say to you, we're able to finance this, again, round numbers, $100,000 project for 3%. And so your monthly bill will be $10,000 or something. And based on that and the savings they generate, they're going to get you to budget-neutral or below.
But if the savings don't materialize, they will cover my financing costs?
They will cover it. That's how it works, yeah. I know, it sounds a little like, wait a minute, that's too good to be true. There's a catch. But there's not. It is a binding contract with them. And then, of course, if they are one of the companies that will write grants for you, that just reduces your monthly charge. They don't say, well, we're probably going to get you grants of XXX, so just trust us. They negotiate the price, and then they write the grants and lower your costs further.
Go ahead. Mike.
Are they guaranteeing, when you say they're guaranteeing savings, do you mean they're guaranteeing the prices or the savings off of current prices?
No, they're guaranteeing your price. They're saying. And think about it, because the county has a contract for the delivery of your utility services. So they're able to predict things very closely.
Any further questions? Ms. Petrie.
You said you've worked with, say, Unit Four. And your role with Unit Four was to advise them on how to make contact with any of these entities you've talked about and with the RFP. And then, when you're in that role, you have a contract with Unit Four. Is that correct?
No, I do this through, EnergyNet is a nonprofit company, and I work with schools and provide them with curriculum. And when I'm working with a school, I will see that there's a need that they don't have the finances for. And so then I suggest, look at performance contracting. I also worked with Gibson City, and that was great fun, because the first project they wanted to do was fairly small, and the students actually wrote a grant to the community foundation, and it was funded. And then they came to me and said, we need new windows, which I usually don't recommend, but they really did need new windows. But in this case, they were so bad that there was. But I said, that's too expensive for a grant. You need to learn about performance contracting. So I taught the students about it, and the students got to sit in on the interview process with the company. So it was a great learning experience for them.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Since you still have the panel here, are there any more questions? We do have one name for public participation, so now's a good time to ask any more questions from the panel. Mr. Hurkey.
I just, I just want to personally thank everyone for coming tonight. It was, it took us a while, but we finally got our quorum. I really want to thank you guys. I know I've hassled you a little bit with a few emails over the last few months, but I think we came away with a lot of good stuff out of this meeting. And as a member of the Facilities Committee, I know I'll be talking with you again in the future as specific projects come up, because we have roofing and boiler, and I'm sure we have plenty of things coming up. So thank you all for coming.
Mr. Alex.
I just wanted to follow up on that a little bit. Obviously, the primary focus tonight has been energy efficiency, and that's great. I think we need to, as county board members, be cognizant of the fact that obviously we don't have much of the way of resources going forward to maintain our facilities. In the past, the county has been somewhat neglectful of its facilities, largely because we have had to spend money on other things, and it's pretty difficult to prioritize maintenance of a facility. You know, you don't want to set aside money for something that appears to be a brand-new building. But it is the case that obviously our assets decline over time, buildings need to be maintained and so forth. So I think what we need to look at going forward is how to combine, you know, obviously, if there are obvious ways that we can save money in the future by increasing the energy efficiency of our buildings, we need to investigate that. We also need to look at ways in which we can maintain facilities we have, how we can use, how we can essentially leverage money that's available for energy efficiency improvements to not only increase the efficiency of the buildings, but to renew the buildings in an energy-efficient way. And so I think there are some exciting opportunities for synergy here, and that even with our limited budget, we may be able to take advantage of some of these opportunities.
Okay, well said. Anybody else? Okay. I thank you all very much for coming and participating. It's a great benefit. Thank you very much. Ms. Petrie.
One last thing. I hope that they will leave us their PowerPoint presentations so that eventually they can put up on the county website. Thanks.
We would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
I think they're all on your computer, so.
You bet. Okay. Like I said, we have one name on public participation, since we're here at the agenda. And I appreciate you, and thank you for, thank you for your patience. Sarah Hall, state your name and your address, please.
Sarah Hall, 3909 Pebblebrook in Champaign.
Thank you.
And I am a small business owner in Champaign. I started a landscaping company about five years ago. And actually, what I wanted to introduce tonight, you kind of touched on when you talked about the pilot program in Rantoul.
Yes.
So I'm really interested in the idea of possibly using my equipment and my business and volunteers to put in one of these community gardens in a space somewhere in Champaign. We could basically do it, it would be all volunteer. I would head it up and put it together. But what we don't have is the land. And what is interesting about that project in Rantoul and this trend that's kind of sweeping across the country in guerrilla garden groups and community gardens is to put gardens in places where people can access fresh produce, organic produce, really easily. And it seems like Champaign is the perfect kind of town for something like this. We have a lot of programs similar to this that are really interesting, but we don't have this actual thing going on. And what's really nice about it, too, is they can be designed with the food that's put in so that they look very nice. I know anybody that's done any shopping for produce recently knows how ridiculously expensive it is right now. And I'm interested in trying to work with Champaign to have some little piece of land somewhere we could do this on. And maybe to have some guidance of, who do I go to? How could I make this happen? Is there something that isn't being used for anything? And it's something that could probably move season to season. I'm interested in starting something that would be a long-term thing in the community as a way we could give back. I don't know if anybody's.
If I could respond, what's going on? Rantoul is, unfortunately, the economy is not very well, and hasn't been well up in Rantoul for some time. So there are a lot of vacant lots that the city owned that they've repossessed for basically tax reasons. Champaign-Urbana doesn't have the same situation, but they are monitoring what's going to happen up in Rantoul. And there's been some discussion with, I mentioned, the Champaign County Farm Bureau. And they're kind of the spearhead of this, along with the Cooperative Extension Service. And I think Champaign is interested, from the way I understand it. I would imagine Urbana, which hasn't really said anything, I would imagine they would be interested in it, too. But I think that this is just going to be a year of learning that hopefully something like this can happen here in Champaign and Urbana, and Savoy also. But I think there is a need. And I think, too, the other thing is, is not only are we talking about food, once we produce it, what do we do with it? Obviously, we eat it, but we need to preserve it, keep it, freeze it, can it, whatever. And I think that's part of it, too, that there's not been a lot of discussion on this. What do we do with it?
Well, and this particular model that kind of I've looked at and seen some examples of across the country, especially in real urban areas, is you put in, you know, here, coming up soon, certainly not right now, since it just snowed 13 inches, we would put in the things that, what would make sense, what's the most viable. And that would be like tomatoes, cucumbers, mostly vegetables, some greens, spinach. And the idea is that you create this space where anybody can walk up and pick it, and people do. And they harvest it as it becomes available. Maybe that would be a little too. Maybe that would be a little too, maybe that would be a little too loose of a way to start, so maybe we'd start with, I mean, even a very small space where we would go in and harvest whatever was good and fresh and take it to the soup kitchen, or take it to, you know, some type of shelter or something that week. It's just really, really cheap to buy the seeds, and the hard part is the labor, and we do that, and we do it well. So my thought was, if there's anything sitting around that isn't being used, how, why couldn't we try this out? And we would take care of it. And also, it's, for me personally, you know, starting a business at the beginning of a horrible recession in Champaign was challenging, but I was embraced by this community. And so I feel this sense of really wanting to give back here, you know? So...
Mr. Hurkey.
Yeah, Sarah, thanks for coming. This is great. I would certainly refer to the Local Foods Policy Council that Patsy has been very instrumental in creating last year, and this is exactly up their alley of the things they want to do, so. And, you know, maybe there'll be some time we can find a spot in all of our many empty acres of grass in Nix County that we own as a county facility, like around here, perhaps. I mean, you know, kids come here for parks for soccer and things like that, they could also come here and learn to garden. I think that'd be a great idea. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes, Mr. Quisenberry.
I'd just like to point out that just across the street here is the Learman Garden, which was done with the city of Urbana acquiring the property to make it happen. And Mr. Alex also pointed out that there's a garden at Stratton School and a Prosperity Garden on North First Street. So this is happening, but it's, I think it's happening mostly in conjunction with city resources, because it's in the city. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't have a garden perhaps at the nursing home or at the jail to provide fresh vegetables, but the cities are doing this, so I think you should hound them a little bit, too.
Okay, yeah, and I know Champaign Public Health has an after-school program where they have kids come in, and that's been successful. And we actually tried to donate a strawberry patch to that last year, because we did their landscaping last year, but they're not ready to develop that part of the area. So I'm just looking for somewhere to get started with this. Thanks.
Very good. Thanks. Okay, is there any other comments this time? Ms. Petrie.
I had no idea what she was going to talk about, but this is a wonderful entree. Before I was on the board, I wrote this absolutely brilliant memo to the nursing home board on how we could turn this land back into the farm and provide the food for the nursing home and the jail. And so maybe something can come of this lady's idea, and I'm glad that James and Chris reminded folks about the work that's being done over there on Learman and Washington. And I did also send a message to Diane Marlin and Dennis Roberts, who are the key Urbana council members for that project, that they are very interested in expanding that. That's an acre of land over there, and they're very interested in expanding that and seeing what they can do to provide some food. So maybe there can be some contacts, maybe, between these various entities and help her get this off the ground.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. We're adjourned.